All individuals that filed their 501 were notified. One replied to stated that they were no longer running and there's five that are running. We have two tonight, one is a little late. We have Sharice Gash and we have Maya Edgely. So I'm gonna pass it over to your moderator, Maria Ramirez, to open it up. Maria?
Thank you, Ken Houston. Good evening, welcome candidates, welcome viewers. Thank you for tuning in to Tumble Tweet Media, the new grassroots of communication. This evening, we're hosting Oakland, California District Three informational forum for the upcoming election on November 3rd, 2020. As you know, these forums are usually in person, but due to the COVID-19, we are live streaming into you and bringing it to you to the comfort of your home. This evening, we will be hearing from our candidates running for District Three of the Board of Oakland Unified District.
School District.
The school district.
Yep.
Will be making a decision of whom will be voting for that has the best interest of our community. Let me share the rules with you this evening. You have three minutes to introduce yourself and your five-point action plan. You have a minute to answer the questions and we will consider more time if the question requires it. We will let you know. You have a two-minute closing statement. This is a forty-five-minute forum. Let's start the forum, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I, can I stop you real quick? So I didn't let them know about the five-point action plan, so she could just tell us her action plan. So we'll start off with Ms. Gash. Ms. Gash, would you like to, um, wait a minute?
Yeah.
Isn't she supposed to do her two-minute open statement?
Three-minute.
Three-minute open statement?
Yes.
Let's do this. Let's do your, your, your three-minute opening statement and just tell us who you are. Um, um, let the people know who Ms. Gash is. I mean, you could tell them anything about you, how long you've been living here, um, what, what experience you had in Oakland. Just let us know who you are, so we know who to vote for. Ms. Gash?
Alright, thank you so much. I really appreciate you all having me on here. Um, my name is Sharice Gash. I'm a generational native of Oakland. Um, I'm a very proud parent of a recent 2020 graduate of OUSD schools. And I come from a family of educators. Um, my mother is a teacher, my aunt is a teacher, my cousins are teachers. Um, I don't have family reunions, I have teacher conferences. Um, so you know, I'm running for the school board in District Three because as a mother and a former student of OUSD, I know first how challenging it is and how much you have to persevere and require for yourself to be an advocate, um, to get an equitable education for our students here in Oakland. I also have witnessed how our school board is in such a desperate need of change.
Yes.
And so for far too long, our school board has taken priority with stakeholders and corporations and funding and de-prioritized the needs of our children and our teachers and our community. And so as you're elected board member, you know, I'm fresh out of OUSD with a graduate. I have, you know, volunteered for African-American male achievement and hidden genius. I've traveled to Kozbok. Um, I've been willing to work with other educators and been able to meet with other educators nationally to figure out how to better educate our students here in Oakland. And so, you know, that's why I'm running. I love my community. I believe in the brilliance of all of our students and I want to be here on the board in order to make an efficient change for our district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gash. Mr. Ken Houston will ask you the first question.
Um, I live in D7, so I can't vote for you, but I have many family members and friends in D3. And I see our path to travel with the, the students going to school. And this, this question came in last, um, week about this. There are many areas where our children's path to schools are not safe. You know, from the illegal dumping and the homeless encampments on the sidewalks. How would you create a safe pathway for our children even though the city of Oakland is responsible for this, this problem? How would you engage with the city? How would you become partners with the city? Or how would you make the, the path to travel safe for our kids to go to school? Ms. Gash?
Okay, um, you know, as a mother, I've actually have had to take off work and travel the route, um, that my son went to school, um, especially when he was younger. And so we practiced and we traveled it and we did it together. Um, so that way I was able to see what, um, the problems and areas that he might find and issues. Um, one at a certain point in time is that the AC bus wouldn't stop for him and it would make him late for school. And so I started as a parent taking pictures and numbers of the buses and going on the next bus with him late and just going into the offices and advocating, just like you can't give him a tardy and hold him after school because this bus line number here just wouldn't stop for the students. And then after I did that for about two weeks, they started picking them up. Um, I know some of the students don't necessarily take the bus to school and that they do walk in certain areas. And so I would encourage a committee of volunteer parents, um, and staff members in the area to be able to walk the routes that are most traveled with the students. And I know that would have to be taken prior to school opening, uh, when school opened us possibly safely, um, to see exactly what are the dangers before school and, um, on their way home for travel. And you know, things change here in Oakland all the time, but I think that if we had parents and volunteers along the routes and kind of just get real old-school with it and you know, just have, you know, women, not just women, but neighbors who are willing to look out for our students, um, along their passages home, just so that we know, um, to be like as a neighborhood watch and really, uh, keep our students safe in that aspect and keep them paramount, uh, their safety.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gash. I will ask you the second question and this is regarding the quality of the schools. Every neighborhood should have quality schools. District Three does not have quality schools. How are you planning to get quality schools into District Three? Ms. Gash?
Well, um, quality comes in waves and unfortunately, um, our students haven't been able to measure, uh, their own success and their interactions with their teachers, their staff and administration. We've had a lot of contracts that have been outsourced, um, for our students for literacy and for African-Americans. At this point in time, from the data history from OUSD is that they have the lowest, um, progression of literacy comprehension. So that's a huge problem if a student is going from pre-K to third grade and they don't, um, have the ability to be on reading grade level, even though we've paid contractors to do so. So we have to be able to make sure that we have, um, staff in place that watches out for our students. We have to have parents to be engaged or the guardian of the students. We have to have students that are being able to speak their own voices, say, "This system is working for me" or "This system is not working for me." And that gauge doesn't have to be year after year. It has to be at least every six weeks as their grading and report card goes. If it's not working, you can find out quickly, but there's no sense in paying contractors three-year contracts or five-year contracts for a system of literacy or any application that is not fundamentally working for the student.
Ms. Gash, Ken, do you wanna have a, a question for her?
Follow-up. Now, that was good. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you with the next question because it's about the quality of our teachers also. So I'll ask that with the next question. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay, next question. Do you currently have a relationship with the superintendent? You need three other voters from the board to pass a policy. How is your relationship with the board members of District Two, District Four, and District Six? Ms. Gash?
Ooh, that's a spicy question. Um, you know, I had plenty of board meetings over the years. I've really advocated and my son has advocated a lot, um, for, and, uh, school sites and to not have racial, um, proing and judgment. And this moment, how would I describe my relationship with the superintendent and D2 and D4 and D6? They don't have. You know, saying, "I, I've been active unto your parent," uh, for his entire, my son's entire educational career. Um, will we be able to move forward? Um, I would truly do hope so and I truly do want them to be able to, uh, vote in the interest of our students. You know, to have, you know, get this district financially, um, solvent and having the budget in order that, so that is transparent for our students and teachers and communities to understand. I would love, really love for them to, to be in line with that and, you know, not close any school sites, um, to stop traumatizing our students and to be, um, investing in our students. You know, I hope that they follow through with BOPs, George Ford's, Floyd's, um, People's Plan. I hope they definitely do because I, I would be really vocal if they didn't follow through with that action of eliminating the police force. So I want to be, uh, most definitely having a great working relationship, um, but my interest is investing within our students and to the fullest extent.
Thank you, Ms. Gash. That's very true and as, as parents, we've gotta be more active also with the teachers and the school district to make something happen. Ken, do you have a follow-up question on this?
Yeah, you need that four votes. Gotta be able to count to four to get policy passed, so it's very important to have those relationships with those other, uh, board members. Um, yes.
Next question. The school district owns the most municipalities in Oakland, municipalities in Oakland. We are losing teachers or they leave in their cars due to the high cost of leaving. Schools are closed and vacant. How can that land be used for teachers and school workers? Ms. Gash?
So, so can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
I wrote that question and, and it came in on the text. Um, but the Oakland Unified School District owns the most land out of all the municipalities in Oakland. Um, how will that be used? How will the closed down schools? Um, you have Brookfield Elementary School that has ten acres of land and I'm hearing that they're closing down. How will we be able to use that? And the question was for the teachers and?
School staff.
And school staff. You know, teachers are, 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 are couch surfing, they, they're, they're leaving. We don't have quality teachers for our students. How do we keep them by using the land of schools and some of the land that's, that's available? That's what I, I assumed that they were trying to say when they wrote that text. Ms. Gash?
Okay, um, yeah, we do have some school sites that were unfortunately closed for, um, as the district said, I am, you know, to be fiscally solvent, but it, actually closing school sites costs the district more money in backend funds, um, at least $2 million. So it's actually more profitable to actually keep the school sites open and running from the state. Uh, we also have to deal with the issues of COVID and the health and safety. Uh, we are going to have to be using social distancing. Some of the recommendations that have been coming out, it's classrooms between 10 to 15 students. So we will need every single one of our school sites, um, that has been scheduled to close. Um, most definitely as the beginning of August, we will school sites. Uh, we do have a lot of property and a lot of land, um, but we also have dozens, if not several dozens, of open development that is happening, um, especially three. We have at least 3,000 units that are coming available plus another five. And with anything for housing and for teachers and for our unhoused youth, what will be excellent if this superintendent and the mayor and these new contractor developers would develop housing for our students and our teachers in complete, and not two years, but for a lot of them. Because our sites are gonna be needed. We're gonna need extra space, nurse extra space for, um, therapists. We're gonna need extra space for supplies from COVID for PPE safety. We're gonna need all of the sites and spaces that we're gonna need on campuses. So to close a school site in order to make for housing, you're taking away from someone's education to be able to house them, but you're still missing something. How are they gonna be educated? It, it, it doesn't work. We have so many developments that are coming out here available and they have to be, at this point, way below the market rent price and be for stabilized housing, our unhoused youth and our teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Very interesting. Next question will be done by Ken Houston, please.
So I wanted to comment on that is I always thought if we have schools and we're closing down schools, why couldn't we build something for the staff? Why couldn't we build something for the teachers that they could live in affordable fashion? And now with COVID, and that's gonna lead to the next question, COVID has changed the game. We don't even know where we're going. So how can we get rid of schools when we don't know? We might have to have these schools and these classrooms for our disabled children, our special ed children and our children that have been left behind. So this leads into the next question. COVID, the COVID virus and distant learning has created a wider gap with our children. I mean, I see it right outside our studio, um, before summer vacation. There were children playing when they should have been on the computer. There were children that did not have internet, but they had a computer. So these children fell behind. The poor, middle-class and rich, you have a gap. So this, this gap has gotten wider. We already had a gap. Uh, so how are you plan to influence the other board members or the, the superintendent, Tony Thurman, to close this gap? What's your idea? What's your, what's your, what's your, what's your, what's your input on that?
Uh, first, we're gonna have to start with a lot of healing. Um, right now, we are as families and as communities dealing with a lot of trauma. We're having family members that are passing away, um, very rapidly and very quickly. And students are seeing, you know, a lot of, a lot of trauma. And, and it, it may take a very long time for them to be able to heal. We will need, you know, psychologists, we will need therapists, we will need extra mentors, we will need nursing staffs. We will need to be able to heal first before we're able to educate. And I know that's kind of hard to say that when you go back to school or when school starts, that you need to hit the ground running and start the educational plan. But this isolation that our students have been with this shelter in place and for some students, uh, their families' economics have drastically changed, especially when you're dealing with a timeframe with nearly 46 million Americans are filing for unemployment. You know, another 40 million that, you know, can't file for unemployment. Uh, things have definitely tragically changed. And the fact of historical context when it came to issue of, uh, back in eight, it was two years where they were up and running. We were very modern. Uh, maybe two years to administration, uh, where we're able to evolve in this, uh, team. But on site students or whether distance learning, um, you know, I would hope that, you know, some of our side consultants that I got, you know, $400,000 salary, I got paid $200,000 salary as a student, will be willing to donate that fund for families who need either foster or some type of internet plan and support those students. Our teachers and our families didn't get any training when our school sites shut down for COVID-19. And so that means that we need to start training from students to parents to teachers. We'll also need tech support, even though we have, uh, the Chrome laptops that were given out. Um, you need to upgrade those systems and you need to know that, um, for certain households that may have, you know, um, siblings and cousins that are having a central house to use, um, how are you gonna educate all of those students in one site at sitting at home and distance plan learning? Um, how are you gonna upgrade their wifi to make sure that everything is essentially okay for them? Um, as for teachers, you know, they would need to be able to be paid a little extra, um, for the additional training and they would possibly need a stipend in order for the additional wifi or equipment that they need at their homes. I mean, when things stopped, things completely stopped, but no one got training on it. And across the board, you would need to do this training across all of our 26 languages that our students speak. So there's a lot to do in a short amount of time right now. Um, but we also need testing, universal testing at our school sites. There's so much to plan, uh, before school opens up in August.
Thank you. I, your internet was, um, jumpy, so I hope the public was able to hear your, um, comment or your statement or your answer. Um, I'm gonna step back a little bit and ask the next question, but we did get a comment on, um, our social media page from Kim Davis. Uh, she said, "I think the premise of this question is false." And I'm thinking she said, "The question about does not have quality schools." D3 does not have quality schools. And this is to Kim Davis. This question is not from me or Maria or Tumble Tweet. This is questions, uh, Ms. Davis, that has come in from the public, from the schools and people that feel a certain way. Everybody's reality is different. If that's what they feel, that's the question that they asked, um, and sent to us, so we asked. So Ms. Davis, if you wanna comment to that, you can send that, um, text and I'll read it. But she just said she thought that, that question, because she mentioned in here that, um, Prescott has high growth in math in the district, but Climate's grads are almost all going to college. MLK has some good stream, um, programming. So, uh, just wanna clarify this, um, to Kim Davis that this was a question that came in from the public that Mrs. Gash was asked to, to ask Oakland Unified School District, um, candidates, um, that were gonna be, um, speaking tonight. So Ms. Gash, I'm gonna go to the next question unless we get another question live, okay? Can you hear me, Ms. Gash? Mr. Alexander? Ms. Gash?
Can you hear me? I have an airplane going over. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, there's a little tech, technical difficulties, but we'll work through it. So my, uh, next question was, I don't know if you know the late Tim White? He was the assistant superintendent. He passed away, a great man, a great man. He, um, he loved Oakland Unified School District. He loved the students. He loved his job. He passed away. Um, not only a great man, but a friend of mine. And I met him through, um, fighting for this question. Will you uphold the 50% minority local hiring rule that they have in place? Do you know about the 50% local participation and will you uphold that? Ms. Gash?
I, I think 50% is a little, I would like to hire with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that's just the minimum, then yes, I would definitely uphold it. I would love to increase that to about 80.
Right.
Um, we have fabulous educators that are, um, that are here, uh, in the Bay Area and, um, we need to utilize them. We have, um, so many educators across the nation. Um, from my experience of, um, Kozbok conventions, that, uh, want to be teachers, um, who could be teachers in, and, 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 and. And, um, I kinda get tired of hearing the, the reason that we don't have a more inclusionary teaching force or administrative force within OUSD is that, you know, we just can't find them. You know, there's a, a great site for support on, on, um, Broadway called the Black Teachers Project. Uh, they advocate and look for and recruit teachers all over the place. Um, African-American male achievement was doing recruiting for, um, educators, uh, to be in our school sites. I mean, we have so many and the one question or the problem that I've heard from them is that their hiring package isn't the same as, um, someone that is white. And that's a problem, you know? Uh, when someone else, uh, who's white comes from a different state and gets a better moving package, a hiring package coming in than the person, um, of the same educational background, if not more, um, doesn't get that. And, um, I think that's a problem that we have and we need to definitely address that, uh, to include, uh, you know, more teachers of color within our district. And the fact that we have really great, brilliant minds of students who, who can become educators and who want to become educators. And we need to increase the pipeline for them in academies and within the colleges that are surrounding us to make sure that they get a great hiring, um, platform into coming into OUSD. Because what we wanna do is we would love to educate you and we would want you to come back and be a part of your community as an educator as well.
Great, great, great answer. Um, I have a question here that came in and I wanted to ask, and, and do you mind, Maria, if I ask the question?
No, go right ahead, please.
Um, how will you address the criminalization of our youth starting in the classroom? I don't know where that came from, but that was a question that was sent in. Um, do you wanna reply to that? How will you address the criminalization of our youth starting in the classroom?
Um, as a mother, I've experienced, uh, my son being profiled. Um, he is a lovely brown hue chocolate boy and he's a beautiful mind and spirit. And he's had issues with, um, teachers, uh, TS, um, TAs and substitutes that have, uh, either kicked him out of class because he was looking directly at him, um, because he, uh, might have been slouching in a chair, um, because he was sectioned and seating in an area um, that someone else was, um, maybe acting up and they just sent eight of them to the principal's office and for referrals, um, even though he did nothing wrong. It's, um, it's very frustrating as a parent, you know, when you're sending your child to school to be educated and you having to trust, uh, teachers to be responsible with their education and not come in with their own biases and not perpetuate, um, prejudices within the classroom. Um, you know, it's something that I advocated for all the time and had plenty of talks with principals. And when I came on site, you know, I was upset. I was clearly upset, um, not just for my son, but for the rest of the students there. And so, um, that has to start with, um, with training for our teachers, educators and our administration for, um, students of color. Um, it frustrates me to the heart and it's unfortunate because students lose so much class time. And it's unfortunate because students lose so much class time uh because of someone else's biases and issues. And that has to, that has to be stopped immediately. It cannot go any further.
I'm gonna pass this back to your moderator that I kinda took it over a little bit. I'm sorry, Maria.
You kinda tipped a war.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna pass it back to Maria. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This concludes the questions for, from our residents, students of district three of the Oakland Unified School District. We greatly appreciate your questions and answers tonight. Now is the time for your two-minute closing statement. Please, Ms. Gash, go forward.
Okay, well, I, I truly wanna thank you for having me here. And I just wanna say that um as a parent and as a former student of OUSD that um, um my interests are to represent district three and to hear from the students, families, and communities from the area on how to better move forward with education and the school sites uh for the community as well as the greater um Oakland School District. We have 87 school sites that are unique and filled with legacy and are important to each one of our students, teachers, and communities. And we need to treat them with respect and make sure that we're investing within our school sites as well as the education for our students. And so I, I wanna be, you know, that person on the board so that when you come in and you call and complain, that I'm able to go out to your school sites. I'm able to reach out and talk to you and try to find solutions to better for your students' education and for the school sites at large. And so I'm here to invest and to vote in the interest for our students, our teachers, our communities, and our unions. And so my name is Sharice Gash. You can find out more information about me from shariceshash.com. And I would love to hear from you. I definitely wanna make sure that we preserve our school sites in Oakland and that they're not privatized by um charter billionaires. Uh, we need to hold on and maintain our public education here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gash. Um, a lot of information, and um we appreciate everyone for being with us tonight.
Can I cut you off?
Yes.
All right, I'll cut you off again. I'm sorry. Uh, I want everyone to, to, to tune in to Tumble Tweet Media. Uh, Ms. Kim Davis, if you have any questions, we're gonna have about three more of these D three Oakland Unified School District forums coming up. So if you have some questions or if you wanna come online, live, if anyone wants to come on, if you just, just, just send your questions to Tumble Tweet Media. We'll ask them, and this is not the only forums that we're having. We have in school board forums, we're having um Alameda County Supervisor forums. We have in forums all across Alameda County.
City Council.
And so stay tuned to Tumble Tweet. And, and if you have any questions for Ms. Gash um for, on the next forum, and we have other individuals that showing interest and they're, they're gonna tune in. So we'll have probably about four or five more people. And she, she had the floor to herself tonight, and that was good. Um, tune in to Tumble Tweet Media, nonpartisan uh media station, and just ask your questions. Send them in before and share this with the public, because November the 3rd is five months away. Is it five months, Mr. Alexander? How long is it? Five months away?
Five months.
Five months away. And, oh, four months away. And here's the thing, here's the thing. This, let's call it, this, this shelter in place, this COVID-19, you see the, the spike rising and dropping. We don't know where this is going. We don't know how much longer our children are going to have to do distant learning. We don't know. So this is, this is a fluid, a fluid life-changing um uh event that has never happened before. So Ms. Gash, um, you, you gotta, you got a lot of work ahead, um, uh, because we don't know where this is going.
It's gonna be a great challenge.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge for everyone. So I, I'm sorry for taking it over again, but turn in to Tumble Tweet Media. Send your questions, because we're gonna have forums across the board for the next four months. Because November the 3rd is voting day, local, regional, and this presidency, which is very important for all of us. And I'm gonna say this, like my cousin says, and I'm gonna pass it to you, says, "Politics starts local." And that was from Darryl Carey, um, and he's ill now, so let's keep him in our prayers. Politics starts local. Maria Ramirez.
And this is a way to communicate with our residents more than anything. Uh, because like we said, we used to this, to do, to do this in person.
Yes.
So this is our new way due to what's going on in the whole wide world. So it's not just here, but it is affecting everybody. And this is a way to let our residents know, let our students know.
And keep the public informed.
Who's running.
Yeah, and keep the public informed.
And who's gonna represent you as the, the community and, and make your vote count. Um, with all that, like we said before, the nomination opens Monday, July 13 at 8:30 a.m. And the closing date is Friday, August the 7th by 5 p.m. Now, to the registered voters, you can vote as early as October 5th, 2020, at the Alameda County Courthouse. If you're not registered to vote, again, please, please, please do so and make your vote count.
Yes, this is a very important election all across the board.
Thank you for being with us. Have a blessed evening. Have a safe 4th of July.
Right, right.
Maria Ramirez, Ken Houston.
Son of Oakland, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sharice.
Good night.